I'd like to call the Monday, September 14th, 2015 Planning Commission meeting to order. I'd please like to ask if you'd rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I want to thank you and welcome everyone tonight. Tonight's consent agenda consists of, the agenda consists of, the consent agenda, the site plan and design review for Casentino's Price Chopper, and there is one change on the agenda. The item four will become item three, so the UDC plan presentation will go to number three, and other businesses number four, and then followed by the adjournment. So at this time, I would entertain a motion on the consent agenda.
Move to approve.
Commissioner Billups, do I hear a second?
Second.
Commissioner Wal- I'm sorry, McCall, do I, all those in favor, do I hear aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carried. Now we'll go to item number two, the site plan and design review for Casentino's. Mr. Hawley will make the presentation.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the commission. Before you tonight is a request for a reapproval of site plan and design review for a grocery store addition with site improvements. The property is located at 1305 Northwest 7 Highway, which is located on the west side of Northwest 7 Highway, north of Interstate 70 and Point Center. On November of 2013, the Planning Commission approved this expansion to an existing Price Chopper grocery store for 77,000, the total number of square feet was to be 77,500. The applicant was not able to apply for building permits within the allotted one-year timeframe. The application did expire on November 25th, 2014, so the applicant is requesting a reapproval of the site plan and design review application with a few changes that we'll talk about. First off, the original approval had an existing floor area of 61,200 square feet, and the building addition was to be 16,300 for a total of 77,500 square feet. With this new proposal, they've actually found out that the existing building is 57,522 square feet. The addition that they are intending to add on is 21,157 square feet. So the total now will be 78,679, and that is about 1,179 additional square feet from that which was originally approved. For a building this size, that's pretty insignificant. But when they increased the size of the building, it also did impact the parking, so the current proposal would require 315 parking spaces, and they are proposing 252. There was a variance that was issued for parking, and that variance had a net reduction of 66 parking spaces, and that variance, of course, remains valid, and the applicant is reducing the number of parking spaces by only 63 spaces. So in fact, they are still within the parameters of their existing variance. Other than that, staff is recommending approval of this reapproval of the site plan and design review, and we are recommending approval with seven of the nine conditions. We removed two of the original conditions because those conditions have been completed either by posting an escrow prior to the final plat approval, or in the second case, it was through the request and approval of a vacation for a portion of an easement. With that, I'll stand for any questions, and the applicant is here if you have questions for them.
Are there any questions for Mr. Hawley? Would the applicant, thank you. Would the applicant like to make a presentation?
Actually, I really don't have anything to add. My name's Arnie Tullock with Schaefer, Kline &amp; Warren, 11250 Corporate Avenue, Lenox, Kansas. We did provide a letter of explanation on the reasons for the increase. Basically, it was some addition along the front of the store that brought the square footage up more. The actual expansion on the south side remained about the same. With that, if you have questions, I'll be glad to answer them. Other than that, we look for your approval.
Are there any questions? Yes, Commissioner Billups?
Just a quick question. Since this is a kind of a reaffirmation of this project, are you ready to go forward now? Do we have a timeframe as far as?
Actually, what brought this all to a head was our forgetting that we had an expired approval. We are in for building permit approval now. We've gotten some comments back, which we are in the process of addressing, so we look to start construction very quickly.
Look forward to it.
For the building permit.
Are there any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Tullock. I ask for a motion for the site plan and design review for Casentino's. Mr. Commissioner Billups?
Madam Chair, I move for approval of site plan and design review, SPDR 0915, 4959, with the seven staff recommendations.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Commissioner Wallace, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. Thank you very much. Now, number three will have the presentation. Mr. Allen will make a presentation on the newly revised UDC 2014 Comprehensio Plan and the Design and Construction Manual.
All right. Well, as you know, back August 3rd, so just a little over six weeks ago, City Council took your recommendation for adopting the new Unified Development Code and moved forward with that adoption, made that effective October 5th. So since that time, and during, again, primarily here this month of September, we're going through some training events and opportunities to provide education information to boards, commissions, staff, and the general public as well on the new UDC. So here is your first opportunity in a more of a public setting. We've done more of an internal training up to this point. Now we are moving forward with providing some kind of just updates on what is the, what are the major changes in the UDC, and kind of what to expect as we move forward with new applications and processes. So not to belabor that introduction any longer, you may have seen a lot of what you'll see in this slideshow in various versions over the past year to two years as we've been working on both the comprehensive plan and the UDC. Again, it does, it does begin with the comprehensive plan. Again, the UDC is really based on what the comprehensive plan laid out. Again, thank you to everybody, part of the Planning Commission, who was involved with both the comprehensive plan and/or the UDC. Again, the comprehensive plan is about places, not land uses. Again, you don't have that necessarily parcel-by-parcel future land use map that you recall whenever we reference. The 2003 comprehensive plan by reference, as you see that in the list of exhibits for public hearings. Now you'll be seeing the 2014 comprehensive plan by reference starting October 5th. Again, it's a planning system, more again than just parcel-by-parcel land use identification. It's incremental, strategic, and a different way to think about the city. We looked at different themes, big ideas, as they're, as we called them, local integrated natural connections. Again, that was the first and primary emphasis of why Blue Springs is a great place to live that we gathered from all of our public meetings as we put together comprehensive plan, is that all the access to natural resources, to parks, to trail system and such, and we built upon that, looking at neighborhoods and gathering places. You can see a little sliver of a photo there of downtown. A great place to grow business, again, also emphasizing somewhat of downtown, and that's a emphasis playing off of the downtown master plan to integrate into the comprehensive plan. And then finally, breathing life into old corridors, thinking about corridors, and not just these nodes and neighborhoods, but also how we connect all of those. You can see the new Woods Chapel underway there in the bottom photo. Again, we landed on four different frameworks, kind of identify our goals and targets moving forward, places, connections, city image, and investment. With that, we built, from these frameworks, we built kind of the next level down, so the high, the high levels, the frameworks, citywide, moved on to specific plans, and we looked at three different specific plans, both in the north, central, and south part of the city, typically, or generally all west of 7th Highway. And from there, we drilled down even further, looking at different development types, so more of a project or conceptual level detail. We have five others to still look at, so eight total, and we'll be looking at starting those back up here this fall. So stay tuned as we move forward with kind of the next phase of the comprehensive plan, looking at specific plans and development types in additional areas. So that brings us to the 2015 Unified Development Code. Again, it's an entirely new addition of the UDC. It was a full rewrite, full, I guess, disposal of the original one, which was last fully rewritten back in 1996. Our focus again is on simplifying the development approval processes, and that's where we want to talk a little bit more about that with you here tonight. Combined some of the processes, provided more of a menu. You've heard me talk about this a lot. Our kind of tagline has been, "You meet it, you build it." Again, as companion, as I mentioned, to the comprehensive plan, it emphasizes all those places and spaces that we talked about just on the previous slides. So we're going to go section by section here. Again, a handout has been provided, kind of the highlights, the major pieces we wanted to emphasize. So as I walk through some of these changes, you may not necessarily see those in your handout, but obviously, they are all available in the full version. We do have that online, and I'll get to that a little bit later, as to where you can find that and the purpose for that. Right off the bat, we have Section 401, which are the general provisions, updated dates, grand filing of current developments. So with that, oops. Just to park and grand filing of current developments here a little bit, you'll see that October 2nd is our last application deadline. You're going to see a lot of mixing and mingling of projects and applications, I think, for the first several months. So we will certainly, as staff, try to guide you as best we can to decipher the differences between the two, both the existing code and now this new code. Again, we'll be seeing some applications come forward here, old site plan and design review, PUD plans. You'll be seeing those for a while as those projects get, you know, reach their conclusion. But again, you'll also see some newer projects, newer plans and applications come forward under the new system, again, all starting in October. So, well, we're going, we're working on identifying the best way to kind of, you know, signify that, you know, not just a asterisk, per se, on your agenda, but help you kind of identify the differences. Hopefully, we won't have too much overlap, but we will be expecting some. And I'll get into a little bit more about some of those areas you can be looking for. As consistency of terminology, I want to make sure we're saying the same thing throughout the code, using the same right words. Section 402 just talks about the decision-making bodies, yourselves included. We really just looked at the Historic Preservation Commission and the Downtown Review Board, trying to tie the two of those together more specifically with a lot that's been going on with the Downtown Alive, and also the Historic Preservation Commission over the last number of years. We're adding some language regarding conservation districts. You'll see some more of that coming up in October out of the City Council discussion. And now getting into more of the stuff that you may have seen in the handout, I think the handout starts in 405, is that right, Jim? So we're really emphasizing chapters for sections 405 and 407 tonight. So I want to walk through a little bit more specifically here, Section 403. Again, it's overall, it's a large-scale reorganization of the development review procedures. There is a procedure summary. I'll jump to that here real quick. It looks a little bit overwhelming on the screen, but again, as a one-pager, we tried to consolidate, again visually, and just as a, again, one pager, a handout, for applicants, the different processes, or the different applications, and the processes that go along with those. As you can see here, we broke it out into, you know, who are eligible applicants for each of these, different types of applications. As you can see, this is the list essentially of all the applications that would be provided. This is shorter than what we've had currently. And again, you'll see as you go through the code, this would fill the whole page if we use the current code. So we've shrunk essentially the number of applications that are available and necessary. So you can see those who are, again, essentially have standing to apply. As you can see as well, the checkbox, see if I can point that out here with the mouse. This column here shows you, pre-application meeting is required for virtually every application, where notices are required, and again, that's primarily dealing with public hearings. And then the review body. And you can see PC is where you folks would come in, right here in this column. Planning Commission, you can see that there's a key down at the bottom. Public hearings, D is you have decision-making authority, much like you did tonight with the application just before here. Special review, there's also appeals that are available, things like that. It's a little, it might be, it might seem or look a little bit cumbersome, but it really does fit with what we've already been doing. So there's not a lot of difference here. It's merely, we're consolidating all the disparate processes that were scattered throughout the code into this matrix, and then Section 403 in a more textual basis. So I don't want to belabor on this, but if there are any questions about it, can certainly go through that if you'd like. Moving back just real quick, one new section that was identified as a kind of a requested area that a number of other cities have been going to are administrative plats. Jim, if I can point to you, and I'll give you this microphone here, if you want to talk a little bit about that, because that's something we've been working on for a little while in advance of this.
Yeah, and this is really straight, pretty straightforward, and it's very similar to what we have had in the past that we have called minor lot line adjustments. We will still have minor lot line adjustments. They've always been approved administratively, but now, much like other cities around the state, we will have what's called a minor subdivision. So if you're doing a subdivision with three lots or less, and you have no public improvements associated with that minor subdivision, you can just do that administratively. And it makes a lot of sense to do that, because when you remove the public improvements, the plat is a ministerial type of approval anyway. So we decided to go with that, and it will allow, it will allow to shorten timeframes for some developers that can meet that requirement.
Thanks, Jim. I'll probably have you stay up here just for a moment. Some of the other things we want to hit here in terms of development review procedures, and again, we're probably emphasizing this a little bit more with you folks than with, we did even with staff, we met with them last week, or the overall public, because these are the things that you're going to be seeing, or perhaps not seeing, in different versions moving forward. Plan developments is another new term. You're familiar with planned unit developments, PUDs. We're also, you're also familiar with PROs, planned residential overlays. Both of those have concept plans and final plans. We're looking at, what we have, we've looked at, and as we're moving forward here, with plan developments as a consolidated version of those two. So we're not segregating residential, commercial anymore, but we've put them all under the general category, plan developments. This, too, is very similar to what other cities have done. I know Lee Summit does something very similar to this, trying to, again, to simplify the terminology, make it more consistent, so develop, the development community can have a little bit more, they don't need a new dictionary every time they cross municipal boundary. Try to, again, kind of pare a lot of this down. Site plan and design review, there's some new thresholds. We talked about this previously, in terms of what those thresholds are between an administrative site plan and design review, and one that would still go to this body. And we can talk also, reasonable accommodations has to do with ADA standards and requirements as relates to the UDC. So let me jump ahead here. Again, this is probably a little bit harder to read. I put these on the slide because they weren't necessarily part of your handout, but we can certainly provide this PowerPoint slideshow to you over email once we're done here. But here is what breaks down the difference between, with your site plan and design review, administrative review versus the more standard process that you're familiar with. Again, the process, if it goes through to Planning Commission, is still very similar in terms of application, format, you know, checklist, things that you'll be seeing. There's some more expansion, we'll get into that 405 and 407, about the specific design standards and such we'll be looking for, but the process itself is very similar, if not identical. Administrative review, though, as we mentioned before, any building that less than 25,000 square feet and meets all the development standards, so all the standards within the UDC, can move forward with administrative review. And that's, again, a big change from what you've been seeing up to this point, where every site plan and design review over, anything over 750 square feet, expansion, new construction would go before this body. And again, the idea is to simplify it, where it's "You meet it, you build it," that mantra, but also, again, that size seemed to be a good threshold for where there's a lot more, a little bit more complexity once you hit that, that number. So things less than 25,000 square feet, many fast food restaurants would fall under that, but again, there's that important piece of that, and that meets all the development standards. So if they're looking at any kind of deviations from what is in the new code, they still would be coming forward to you, perhaps to the Board of Adjustment, for variance, things like that. So there's, there is that additional public review if they can't meet kind of the cookbook, follow the recipe of the new development code, UDC. Again, there's a longer list there in terms of additional improvement service, more than 10,000 square feet, other building or development activity involves investment less than 80% current value of the property, so things that may still be, that may meet different thresholds square footage-wise, but in terms of actual percentage of the whole building, you know, again, there's some, there's some meaning of that. For example, I know Commissioner Billups, we brought up at one top point the Wendy's, and how they strip the thing down to the studs, and, or further than that, yes, down to the footings, and started from scratch and didn't get through a site plan and design review process. You can see here, any remodel or addition that involves alteration of less than 75% of the exterior facade will go through administrative review. Therefore, anything greater than that would come before you. So again, it catches those that are trying to find loopholes previously, but still allows quite a bit of leeway to make modifications and expansions under an administrative type of process. So I thought that was, hopefully, this is a good balance. We'll see how it works out, and I'll get into that a little bit later in terms of how we're going to review these as we move forward in terms of effectiveness. If folks are coming in with, you know, 74.9 or something like that percent of the facade, and they're trying to sneak in that way, you know, perhaps it's not meeting the intent, even though it is meeting the letter of the law. Any questions on this? Again, this is kind of one of those, maybe a little bit of trial and error as we move ahead. We have some examples that were included as part of the packet, and we can go into those a little bit here later as well. We've had a number of pre-application meetings with a few different projects that may be coming forward, and Matt Wright, our associate planner, did a great job putting together that kind of a comparison, three pages of three different projects, kind of walking through the before and after, kind of under the current code, here's what, how it would look under the new code, here's how it would look as well. And there's a good cross sample in terms of a few that are under the 25,000 square-foot threshold, and a few that are over.
And one thing that we looked at, the first example you have is a proposed medical building. And if you look at that, and you look at the site plan, you read the specifics, one of the things that will say is Phase 1 is 25,000 square feet, and then it will say that Phase 2 is also 25,000 square feet. And if the question were to arise, does that go through site plan and design review? The answer is yes, it does. If you have a phased development that is over 25,000 square feet, it doesn't matter that you're breaking those phases into smaller phases, it goes through site plan and design review. So I just thought I'd put that in in case the question arises.
Thanks, Jim. Also, you can see there right at the bottom of the screen, terms of, kind of going along with that, site plan's accompanying other administrative or discretionary approvals required to be reviewed by the Planning Commission. So you'll still be seeing things, you won't just see a rezoning or plat and then not see the site plan and design review. Should, for example, that medical office building come in and need to rezone and plat and, you know, two or three other processes, let's say, that would, that can and should trigger a site plan and design review process, even if it is, you know, 24,000 square feet. So on its face, it looked as though, I know some, some were a little bit leery about how this might work moving forward, but again, there are kind of a lot of loophole closures, I think, that we put into place here to hopefully catch those that, like Jim was saying, they're not going to just come piecemeal it in and sneak under the radar. And again, it's really the process. They still need to meet the code, it's still that, those standards are still in play administrative or before the Planning Commission. It's just the process. Is there additional application, additional fees, additional review time, things like that? So that's where the, their big difference is between those in terms of the process. So moving forward here, Section 404 really looks at zoning districts, and as you've noticed here, the, these section numbering is still the same essentially throughout, whereas in the 400s, we haven't changed numbers, per se. We've moved some things around, but 404 is the zoning district regulations, and we've not modified anybody's zoning, need to make that abundantly clear. Nobody's property's been rezoned as a part of this. We haven't changed zoning category names. We have added two zoning categories as, again, adding to the menu, two new menu items, as it were, and those are NL and NO. And these are some mixed-density neighborhoods. We call N neighborhood limited, and NO neighborhood open. And here's just an explanation of those. Again, I'm just giving you kind of the cut paste rundown here, because these are not necessarily in your handout. Again, NL district is more of a, kind of a smaller scale, mixed-use. The idea is looking at more of the mixed-use in a horizontal fashion. For example, you know, Amsterdoring Landing is not really mixed-use, but there are different scales of retail and different retail users on that project. In a similar way, that's how the NL, NO would operate. Instead of just all commercial, you'd have different scales of some residential along with commercial. Again, the neighborhood open district is a lot more looking at larger-scale projects. You can see some of the terminology there, consistent with the comprehensive plan. Neighborhood centers, talking about NL district, and the NO district talks about neighborhood centers as well as distinct destinations. So we can show a map of that, if you're kind of curious where those are. It's primarily what you would assume, kind of the larger nodes and areas, 40 and 7 all the way to 15th is one area. And again, as you see, 40 blending into the downtown, more residential type to the north along 10th and 15th, this would be an opportunity, again, emphasizing some opportunities for redevelopment in that area, and we're hoping that NL and NO would help a developer perhaps identify a more judicious and open-ended zoning district, rather than trying to piecemeal parcel-by-parcel that we've seen in the past. Chapman Farms, what was formerly called Lake Ridge Village on Lake Remembrance, were kind of, you know, chopped up bits and pieces of different zoning. In this case, they could do more of a, you know, an NO district over the whole thing and still modify their underlying plan. So again, a little bit of trial and error, we'll see how this, this goes, but when you expand the menu, you, you hope people will buy it, and you can keep it on there long term. We'll see how it goes. So with that, we're moving into 405, and I'll turn a little bit more of this over to Jim to kind of talk about some of these things, but it starts with that U- But it starts with that use table. That's the first page, first few pages, I think, of your handout is the use table and we, it follows the same format as we just saw with the kind of procedures summary. And rather than just the letters of P and C about permitted and conditional, we've created a little more just a graphic representation, also broke out the different use groups somewhat differently and this ties into, and we'll get into this a little bit later, 411, which is the kind of interpretations glossary section. The definitions are also matched up in the same configuration. Building types, and this is again, you'll see some more, we're, we're going to work on putting together some handouts that hopefully, again, it's a one pager, but we can see how it works out in terms of different building types. And that starts with your, right off the bat on 405, if you flip the page to 405-2, you can see the residential building types as a description. I'll jump ahead here real quick, sorry, to show you some of those. This isn't all of them on this image, but these are some of the primary ones. You might recognize a lot of this type of imagery, it's very similar to what's in the downtown master plan, downtown development code we did back in 06 and 07 and it follows the same kind of concept. The idea here being trying to not necessarily be a strictly form-based code, but be kind of a hybrid between our standard use-based code and also now looking at form in terms of different building types. So we're trying to merge the two and a number of cities have had success with this and we're hoping to do the same. Again, we've had success with the downtown master plan, downtown development code. So hopefully translating that in a little bit more basic sense over the whole city is, will, will be, will, will work well and we'll, we'll see how that, that plays out. One thing you, I want to point out, if you're thinking, right here, second row, first column, accessory dwelling unit. This is a new thing for us and we've talked about this before as we put this together. Really looking at necessarily the, the tiny house movement that you see on all the, I guess there are like two or three shows now on HGTV that talk about tiny houses. Naturally, my kids all want one, which is fine with me some days, but it's the idea of looking at more of a detached, more traditional quote, mother-in-law quarters. I have one of those in my house that's attached as kind of a master suite and such for, you know, for extended family and such, but this is looking at, at expanding that to more of a detached version of that. And again, the idea is to, you know, allow some kind of mixed residential uses, so to speak, but that extended family concept as we move here into the, further into the 21st century. So we'll see how that plays out, there's some specifics on that and I can talk about that here real quickly. ADUs, again, we like acronyms. ADUs are accessory dwelling units, you may also see it as accessory living units, accessory residential structures. So a lot of different, it's called a lot of different names, but it really means the same thing. So an accessory building shall be designed, these are design and performance standards, just wanted to walk through, it's in the code. It's kind of blended in two different sections, both in 405 here and in 405 010 and also in 405 060. Accessory building shall be designed to include the same materials architecture of design mass and design details as primary building. So again, the idea is we're not trying to do something radically different, it's different enough just to have a detached residential unit, but try to minimize its footprint as well. The footprint shall not exceed 10% of the total lot area. So we are talking about the tiny house type concept. It shall not exceed 750 square feet or 50% of the principal structure, whichever is less. So the idea is not to be overshadowing the principal structure, not to be something gloriously huge, not trying to create this as a detached duplex, so to speak, it really is kind of a one person or one couple type detached unit. We looked at, and City Attorney Yendis will confirm this, we looked at all these different other qualifiers when we put this together in terms of, you know, blood relation and marital relations and things like that and it just seemed too difficult to really even consider how you would enforce such a thing. So again, a number of HOAs have restrictions, I know there are a number out there that may not allow such a thing. We would allow this, again, where, you know, throughout the city, but again, HOAs may have something more strict, as you know, that's the case with a number of things. ADU shall count toward the overall building coverage of a lot, again, that goes back to that 10%. And finally, only one is allowed per residential lot and again, only as accessory to principal structure. So the idea is not to, you know, carve out a single lot, put a tiny house in there, sell it off or rent it, but, you know, within a fully established large lot residential area. The idea is really to emphasize it as an accessory to that principal structure. So I didn't want to dwell on this too much, but we have actually been, like I said, the, the TV shows are there, we're getting some interest, I think, from the development community. So there, there is a, a market that's growing and exploding perhaps already for that. So number of cities have not spoken to this or they have some really generic allowances or prohibitions and we want to be a little more specific in how we could permit that in a really kind of scaled down restricted fashion. So let me jump back real quick to the rest of the 405. Again, you see residential and non-residential minimum, maximum standards within the building types as you go through the code. You know, starting on page 405-9, you can see a lot more details with each of these drawings. And again, I need to emphasize that the drawings themselves, obviously, we don't want every building to look like that per se. As you look at the drawings here, I can jump ahead to the non-residential here as well. Obviously, these are just representative and that's, I think we even put that somewhere in a footnote, that these are really just representative and they're not, you know, this isn't necessarily exactly the same scale or design type we're expecting, it's just a concept for when you talk about pad site, you know, top right, this is generally what we're talking about versus a, you know, a general commercial building is going to look a little bit different, you see the bottom left, in terms of how it lays out on a lot, how it speaks to the public realm. So I think I hit everything on the list here, accessory temporary uses, we updated and streamlined those and we talked about the ADUs there as well. All right. 406, and this is a little preview to what our city engineer Ben McCabe will be talking about here in a little bit. This is a full rewrite of this. It's a tie-in with the new design construction manual, as I mentioned, that's what Ben will be talking about here shortly. Talks about alternative design materials usage, it's a little new concept in there as well. And then open space systems, wanted to talk about those as well, let me jump ahead here. Again, this, this talks more to that menu concept. So when, when developers come forward with primarily looking at residential or, you know, maybe even a look at Amzair Landing style, commercial subdivision, but primarily looking at residential subdivisions, the, we, again, providing some options for open space types. You know, when, when they've come in recently, it's been, well, we're going to put a pool here. Okay, thank you. And we move on, you know, what, but there's clearly some other options and this just speaks to that and tries to encourage more of, more of those concepts for consideration, both for the developer and then also for you as they come forward. So you can, you know, speak to, well, I see you put a pocket park here, but would it be more appropriate to have some community gardens spaced out here and there? Trail, again, we'll probably see quite a bit of those as we have been. And again, you know, it gives you then some talking points as well, moving forward to say, okay, well, how does that tie into a park or greenway perhaps in a subdivision neighboring this one? So let me jump back real quick. Street types, this talks, this is in reference to what the design construction manual talks about, this is really generic in its drawing, but these are also what you see precisely in the comprehensive plan. Natural is more of what's already existing, something we're promoting or suggesting, but it's just identifying what types of streets are out there already as well as ones that could be constructed. Activity talks more about, you know, downtown concept, but also, again, more of a, you know, like an Amzair Landing, things like that, when you talk about a lifestyle center, how does that street function, even if it's not necessarily strictly a public street, how does that street function in these different typologies? Standard and neighborhood, you'll see a lot more of those coming forward. And again, now we have some more images, some more, again, talking points as plats and these planned developments come forward for your review as well as, you know, not just a staff review. So again, some more, more on your menu, I guess, to choose from as well, to help you again, with your review of these projects. 407, general development standards, this is a big area, this is also part of your handout, a big chunk of your handout actually. We talk about access types, 407 13 through 16. Again, those aren't necessarily new things, but they're just newly drawn and presented. I can flip to that. But again, that terminology concept, trying to be consistent and acknowledge things that we've always asked for or looked for, but now we can actually point to, oh, did you look at page 407-14 for this type of access? I think, you know, it looks like that will meet all the code, but have you considered some other alternatives within your project? Frontage types, that's another, this will be a big one that you'll be seeing as projects come forward. This is kind of an enhancement, an expansion of the landscape standards. Again, necessarily calling for gobs more plant units, but it's just, again, how do these speak to the public realm? And let me jump ahead here. You hear those access types, again, very similar to what we've, things we always talk about, but now there's some drawing and some definition to those. And here are the frontage types. Again, when staff reports come forward, when you see projects coming forward, these are the things we'll be referencing. And again, you can go to the, the drawing and the, the kind of table or a call out in the code. And that is, there's even a, starting on page 407-21, if anyone wants to flip to that, that's where the, the permitted frontage types are, in terms of where you can see these. Again, the yard and setback, which is in the middle bottom of the screen there, that is going to be probably the most common one that you'll be seeing primarily in residential. You'll see a lot of buffer edge, I think is what we've talked about as well. And now you see primarily in commercial and the rest, I think, are a little bit, maybe some enhanced street, street scape frontage, but the rest are going to be a little bit more kind of uniquely tailored to different projects. You know, there's, there's, we've been seeing one through a pre-application meeting, some multifamily that would utilize that courtyard to the top right, it would fit with what they're looking to do. Again, not necessarily looking exactly like that, but that concept is what they'd be proposing. So those are the things that we just want to highlight here, the things that you'll be seeing as it comes forward. And again, the following pages, 407, 22 and onward, gives you some ideas in terms of what staff is looking at, what the applicant needs to look at when they propose those on their individual lots or their project as a whole. So again, we can, we can jump back and talk about any of these as we go along, but I want to give some time here for Ben as well to go through his, his presentation. Some other changes, 408, supplemental standards, we kind of reorganized all the add-ons, as we called it, micro wind turbines, self towers, I think floodplain, all those different types of, I say leftovers or add-ons, but all the things that you may not necessarily see that frequently, but are certainly a part of the development process, development code, we reorganized those into 408 instead of just kind of scattered throughout. 411 is interpretation, we called it now, it used to be called definitions, it's obviously much more than that. Now, we now have a glossary, it really follows that 405, that use table. And we also include interpretation and dimensional standards. So when we talk about rear yard setback, what does that mean? And that's where this is defined in a more interpretive standpoint. So we're all on kind of the same page, literally, figuratively, when folks come in and, and say, well, what do you mean by this? I want to put a fence up, but I can't because you call my such and such yard, this part of my yard, the rear yard versus side yard, side yard and such. Again, the explanations are by use type, again, following that use table as I mentioned. And coming up, you'll be seeing here, I'll mention this in the table, kind of timeline coming up, there's some minor cleanups we've already noticed. Again, we've only had this for about six weeks and we've already, you know, kind of working through it in a kind of a dry run, so to speak. We've noticed some pieces that were kind of lost in translation, as it were, or needed some cleanup, violations enforcement being one of them, daycare kind of definition and how we match that up with the state standards, which are a little bit different than what we had previously. And then those frontages, I mentioned those frontage types, we had just some, again, talk about interpretation, we were not quite clear on some of the interpretation side, side of things, so we moved some things around or proposing to move some things around. So that's the remaining timeline I want to talk about. Here we are tonight, planning commission boards training. We invited, I think, a few other boards and commissions, appreciate Mr. Frost being here, thank you, to observe and hear this presentation, walking through the, the new code. September 28th, so your next meeting, you'll see that those minor cleanups I mentioned before you as a public hearing and everything in the UDC that's modified does need to go through a public hearing. So you may be seeing a lot of those in the next few months. And then finally, the day after that, the morning after, September 29th, we'll be having a developers workshop. I think some of you have been around here enough that we used to have an annual developers workshop. I think we stopped putting those on probably about five, six years ago, but it came when we kind of ran out of steam, but now we have a lot to talk about with the new code and the design construction manual and the comprehensive plan. So we're putting together a half-day morning workshop, developers workshop, and that's where you can find the online version of the plan, excuse me, of the UDC at bluestringsgov.com/developersworkshop. It's not necessarily broadcasting it publicly, I guess we are now, at this meeting, but we are taking reservations for that, it is free, but you do need RCP, we're looking at folks who are in the development community, building community, real estate, banking, so on and so forth, to attend that as we had in the past. Later that week, on the 20th, on the second, that's Friday, the second, is the final day to apply for development approvals under the current UDC. Again, that's where you see a lot of that overlap, starting, okay, ending, I guess that'll be the last time to bring in those applications, but you'll see some of that kind of overlap for the next few months. The new UDC goes into effect then the following Monday and that night, we hopefully with a positive recommendation here from the 28th, will be moving forward with those minor cleanups first thing that first day. So then January, we see January to April, it's probably going to be October to April, we'll be coming forward with any kind of modifications, as I mentioned, minor cleanups as we, as need be. So we'll be reviewing and modifying as your staff to make sure that the code is working the way it's supposed to be working, the way it's intended. And if there are any kind of snags or oddities along the way, we'll be bringing those forward to you for your review and consideration. So with that, I will stand for any questions and then turn it over to Mr. McCabe.
Does anyone have any questions?
Ben Cave City Engineer here, and I appreciate you guys having me this evening. And I'll be really quick on this because it's almost 7:30. So this is just a brief introduction and a real brief highlight or overview of the Design and Construction Manual. We're going to focus on just significant changes to the, to our current design and construction requirements for public infrastructure. And so by significant, I mean from a cost perspective or from a mandate from a state or federal agency. So what is the Design and Construction Manual? It is a document that combines all of our construction and design requirements in one location. Previously, it's been fragmented in many different documents and in our city code. So we've pulled everything out of the code, made references, and put it in one location at a website. And so our plan here is, we're coming down to communicating quickly and easily so people can be efficient with their time. I saw this at a conference I went to, might replace engineer with public works, good at math, no social skills, can't spell. We hope we aren't like that, and we're trying to communicate effectively with our customers. Oops. So real quick, where is the Design and Construction Manual located? If you go to our homepage on the Blue Springs website, go to government, go to public works, and wait for it to load, go to engineering, there is the Design and Construction Manual. And so this is laid out. Real quickly, the construction specification section is first, the design specification section is next, and then we have our standard detailed drawings at the end of this. So why are we doing this now? It's not because we're bored. We're doing this now because we want to make information available to our customers. We want one comprehensive document for public infrastructure improvements. We want to add any mandates that have been passed down from federal, state agencies. And we also want to coordinate with the UDC and the comp plan development that's going on. So significant updates, I'm not going to read through this because I'm going to touch on them real quickly, but those are the significant updates I'm going to touch on with this presentation. So the first one is our residential streets. We've noticed we've had a lot of base failures with our residential streets that we aren't having with our higher level streets. And so to resolve that, we are going to be requiring enhanced subgrade stabilization underneath roadway materials. So that's basically, I'm showing that with a typical section. We also added or enhanced the ADA requirements for the sidewalk and the slopes on the side of the roadways. The next significant update is our concrete for our curbs and sidewalks. We had a decade there in the 90s where we had concrete that was failing, and I've got a picture, an example there of de-cracking in our concrete. And so the reason that was failing is the aggregate that was being incorporated into the concrete. What this shows is on the left is the previous specifications. That was the aggregate before it went through 50 freeze and thaw cycles. And after it went through that, there's the aggregate on the right side. And so we've made a change. We went with KCMB mixes, which incorporated different aggregate into the concrete mix. And so that's before and after 50 freeze thaw cycles. The difference between the two is that the top is locally mined aggregate, and the bottom has to be shipped in from other locations. So that's why it's a significant change, is there's a little bit of a cost to haul that in. The next significant change has to do with our sanitary sewer manholes. The issue we've had is the sewer material. If it is sitting there for a while, it releases hydrogen sulfide gas. There is bacteria that lives in the concrete in these manholes that can convert that hydrogen gas, sulfide gas, into sulfuric acid. So we're adding a requirement that they incorporate a material into the concrete that doesn't allow this bacteria to live in the concrete. And to identify that that's been incorporated, we're also requiring they add a tint to the concrete so it'll be shaded green. So that adds a little bit of a cost. The next significant change has to do with our waterline materials. We previously only specified ductile iron pipe materials, and our soils are real corrosive in this area. And what they'll do is they'll start to eat away at this pipe if it's not protected. So we have allowed a plastic pipe alternative with the pipe materials. And this, this is significant because the plastic pipe, it is much cheaper than the ductile iron pipe. The repairs are the same, but it also eliminates the corrosive issue. And real quickly here, I'm going to show you this video that was sent to me by our, it's only a minute, our operations field crew. And they're putting this plastic pipe through a little bit of a test to show its impact, resistance, and durability. So you can see the two trackos there implementing a test. Not a very specific test, but it's a test. I won't, I won't make you watch all of that, but you can see they're putting it through some abuse. And then the next part of this, I guess, video is they take the waterline and they pump it up to about 110, a little bit over 100 tonne pounds per square inch of pressure there. And then they put it through a little bit of some testing there as well. And so I guess while that's playing, the point of this is that we feel confident that this material will perform in the long run. We feel confident that it's, it's going to be durable. And also, there's neighboring communities that are referencing this, this type of material as well, so. And I like watching the video. So the next significant change, I wanted to ask, how many of you all know that we have a permit that's issued by the Department of Natural Resources that allows us to discharge stormwater from the city limits? So maybe 15% roughly. So this permit impacts the whole city, and I'm the fortunate one that has to provide the reporting on this permit and try to enforce the measures that come with this. But the reason I'm bringing it up tonight is there's a couple of the requirements from the permit that affected our DNC manual. So the first one is stormwater quality. And the goal there is you catch the more frequent, less volume storms, you retain them for a longer period of time, you let the pollutants settle out before you discharge it into the natural system. So by that, I mean items like rain gardens and bioswales. And so the top middle picture is an example from the Benton House. It was just completed. They have a rain garden right at the front when you go in there. I like it in the front because it forces them to maintain it, plus it also, it looks good because of the plant units. And planning explained to me that, oh, my video's still going. Crap, sorry about that. So again, the other advantage of this, of the plant units is that I guess it counts to the plant units that community development requires with their developments. So the, the next component of the stormwater permit is stream buffers. We're going to be requiring stream buffers on streams that have a more significant drainage coming to them. And so the thought here is that you let the streams, you provide the area for the streams to do what they're going to do naturally, which is they're going to wiggle around, there's going to be stuff that falls in there, but it also provides an ecosystem for the plants and animals that live there. It also provides some protection for flooding, and it reduces maintenance on the city. So instead of taking these streams and armoring them with concrete and rock and maintaining this forever, you leave it in a natural condition, so. And that is a requirement of our stormwater permit that we start doing that. And then one other component of the permit is, is public education. So we're going to be putting our lids on our storm manholes, they're going to have educational materials on them. Got a fish there, don't dump oils, don't dump into this because it goes into the streams. So real quickly on the stream buffers, we, we looked at the city, we looked at properties that are undeveloped in the city, and we came up with a preliminary layout of these stream corridors, these stream buffers. Each property is going to be a case-by-case basis, but it gives the developer an idea if they'll have a stream buffer on their property or not. And then the other thought as we move forward is you've got this corridor preserved for a future trail. So as we work with parks on enhancing the trail map, this will be a nice tie into that. I think the last major change I need to touch on is the sidewalk layout plan. And where this is coming from is ADA requirements. The current practice is sidewalks are an afterthought to the development. So they lay in the streets, the houses, they come in afterwards, and they try to lay in the sidewalks that meet ADA requirements. So as an example where this is a problem, this is an actual house in the city of Blue You have to carry an ADA compliant sidewalk slope across the driveway so that somebody who has, is handicapped and impaired can continue walking on the corridor. And if you think about this as an afterthought, you can re, there's the ADA slope right there. You can end up with a significant driveway slope and stair issues. And then I took a picture of this one because it's down the street from me, and I got to look at it whenever I go walk them. And again, there's an ADA compliant sidewalk across the driveway, there's the required slopes, and you end up with a little bit of a driveway challenge there. So real quickly on the layout plan, we normally get a plan sheet that looks like this. So the first step is, where are those pesky sidewalks? There they are. Then you need to provide construction details for the sidewalks. So maybe you'll identify where the curb ramps are going to be, identify some sidewalk slopes, identify sidewalk cross slope and width, and you provide elevations at the curb ramps, and you can tabulate that in a table. So that's kind of a quick summary of what we'll be looking for in the sidewalk layout And the last piece of the sidewalk layout plan is when, at the intersections, you have two curb ramps that come together, you have to provide a five-by-five foot level landing pad for a person in a wheelchair to be able to turn and go either direction. And what this does is when you've got rightaway coming at a corner, because of the radius of the street, you end up with a real narrow rightaway, so you need to get an additional triangular area to fit that ADA five-by-five level landing pad. So we've incorporated a standard detailed drawing to show that. This also preserves the corner for site triangle visibility. So the last slide here, with all these changes, we wanted to look and see what this meant to our development community from a cost perspective. So what we did is we did estimates for one mile for each of these different types of roadways, and we came up with a cost per foot before our changes we are proposing, and then after, and then these are the percentage increases that resulted because of the changes we're proposing. So we hope we've been sensitive to the development community, but we've also got issues and mandates imposed on us that we need to try to meet in the most effective way possible, so. With that, I've got, if you want to see the cost estimates, I've got several of those, and I can give them to you. I've also got a real detailed spreadsheet of all the changes we make, if you'd like to see that. And that's my contact information. If you have any questions, I will stand for them. And thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments? Thank you. A lot of work has put in, been put into all of that, so thank you very much. Okay, at this time, the only other business I see that we, on the agenda is the other business. I do have that the next scheduled meeting is Monday, September the 28th, as you've mentioned. Is there any other business that would like to be brought up?
Madam Chair, again, just a reminder that September 29th, the morning after, we will be having that developers workshop. And again, it's, it's half day, it's, it's that morning. You'll see, repeat, a lot of what you see here, saw here tonight, but again, opportunity to interact, discuss with development communities well at that, at that workshop. But if you are interested in attending, please let Karen know by that Friday prior, the 25th? 25th. So not, not long from now, not this Friday, but the following Friday. So we don't have an agenda, per se, time by time, but we will have one in advance of that. Oh, yes, thank you. Jim, do you want to talk about the Eastern Jackson County Planning Commissioner training?
Excuse me. I know that you all had a reminder date of September 29th, and wanted to let you know first that, as it turned out, independents found that they do have a planning commission meeting that night, so we've had to reschedule. You will be getting a new save the date reminder. The current date that we're looking at, and most likely will go forward with, is November 30th. We put two dates out there, November 30th, which is a Monday, fifth Monday in our case. And we also put December 1st out there, which is the day after on Tuesday. I'm waiting for one confirmation, and assuming that I get that, the November 30th date, looks like that will be the date that we will hold that Eastern Jackson County Planning Commissioner training. I think it promises to be pretty good. We have some folks coming in from the Heartland Foundation, as well as some support people from Mark and KC ATA to talk about mobility within the city, and also will probably talk a lot about age statistics, I think. So I think it'll be interesting. I think you'll find it interesting in how that impacts the economy as well as our transportation network. That's what it will be about. Should try to get the save the date out early next week. Thursday is the date that my last confirmation is to return to the city. And once I get that confirmation, the save the date will go out shortly thereafter.
So we're looking at September the 29th for the builders workshop.
Right, that morning, yes.
We want to make sure they hear that, so they might be very interested in that.
It should be. And again, as Jim mentioned, November 30th, I know it sounds like a ways off, but it will be here before you know it.
That's right.
That is the Monday after Thanksgiving, so hopefully everybody will be back and well-rested from the holiday. But it is the fifth Monday, so there should not be any conflict with any of our meetings. Jim mentioned Tuesday, December 1st. Day after that is, was an option, but we do understand that's also the mayor's Christmas tree lighting, so we don't want to have too many conflicts here that evening.
Thank you very much. Okay, is there any other business? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Commissioner Abbott? Commissioner Sanders? All right. Do I hear all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Meeting's adjourned. Thank you.